It is 6:00 PM, and I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on May 4th, 2023. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, may the Fourth be with everyone here. Usually, we think of May the Fourth as Star Wars Day, but from here on out, I'm going to think of May the Fourth in the City of Lacey as Ken Ballsley Day. As the majority of our agenda items are dedicated to Ken, his memory, his legacy, and what he's meant to the City of Lacey, we were going to sort of split this meeting up to where we're going to do some things for Ken, then we're going to break away for a community reception, then come back and do our board's committees' reports. But unless there is something that this council desperately needs to report out, it's my recommendation that we put off our boards, commissions, and committee reports till next meeting, and that way, right after we're done with the proclamation, we can hurry up and celebrate with the rest of the community. Does that sound okay? With that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I would move to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have amended agenda. Right from the get-go, I'm going to come up to the... The Spirit of Lacey Award. This award has really a special meaning for everyone who's served on the Lacey City Council and been a part of the City of Lacey because we know how special it is in order to be recognized for this award. We've only recognized really a handful of people since this award came into existence. And every time we've gone through this process, I've been really filled with gratitude that we were able to share the award, usually present the award with someone who is here. In this circumstance, we are presenting this award to Ken Ballsley, who isn't here with us today, but is with us in his spirit. And I'm going to just read a little bit from the Spirit of Lacey Award. So it says, "The Lacey City Council extends their utmost appreciation and gratitude to Ken Ballsley for over 50 years of exceptional volunteerism within our community. Ken's dedication to Lacey was evident by his numerous contributions, unwavering support in the community, and through his active participation on multiple committees, nonprofit boards, and community events, all focused on creating and promoting a better quality of life for the residents of Lacey. Ken's legacy of commitment to his community will have lasting benefit for many generations, and recognition of Ken's exceptional volunteerism, the City of Lacey bestows its highest honor, the Spirit of Lacey Award, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, May 4th, 2023, on behalf of the Lacey City Council." I had the honor and privilege to speak about my relationship with Ken very recently at his memorial. And earliest memories I have goes back to Ken Ballsley. And so he has been, you know, this constant in my life. And when you think of Lacey, and you talk to people who have been active in our community for a while, everyone knows Ken. Everyone knows Ken. He's Mr. Lacey. And that really means something to me. He meant something to me. Very influential person in my life, someone who would always give it to you straight. You know, in these days, you always knew where Ken stood, all the time. Now, you may not agree with him, but you knew where he stood. And that authenticity is something I'm going to miss. But on behalf of the City Council, it's really my honor and privilege to give the Spirit of Lacey Award to Ken Ballsley, Mr. Lacey. Jane.
This is really heavy. I just want to thank the mayor and everyone on the City Council for their support of Ken and their relationship. And I think he had one with each of you. I know that I went a few times too, when he was meeting with people, and he really got excited about the leadership of Lacey. And he made an effort to know everyone so that he could have those frank kinds of conversations. And I was thinking, since Ken passed away, I say, what would Ken say? What would Ken do? What would Ken want? And I do that all the time. And I'm hoping that you will all do the same. I love the idea that the mayor is making today, Ken Ballsley Day. I just love that. I'm running home. I'm putting it on my calendar. So I know he would be so proud to know how much he was admired by the officials and his friends and his community. And it's just been very nice to hear from so many of his friends about how they admired his work and the things he cared about. And lastly, I was thinking, the last time he was up here, he thanked the council, and then he said, "Don't forget to build the new museum."
Absolutely right.
So I'm going to say that too. Thank you very much. Don't forget to build the new museum.
So before we go into our next award, which is the Ken Ballsley Historian of the Year Award, we have a slideshow that we'd like to show everyone, memory of Ken. So next up on our agenda is that Ken Ballsley Historian of the Year Award. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder, and council members, and everyone who's here and at home. So first, I want to say that Ken told me that he would prefer that you refer to him as the King of Lacey. So do you think we could get that fixed? I saw that in a record the other day, and I was like, oh, yeah, he did say that. That's funny. Anyway, before we get to the Lacey Historian of the Year, I want to talk a little bit about Lacey History Month. May is Lacey History Month. And I'd like to recognize the members of our historical commission. I think only one of them is physically present, our Chair, Jim Keough, if you want to stand. And then I'll name the others. Hopefully, they're at home, and they'll hear us appreciate them. So we also have Vice Chair Kevin Wickoff, Alan Tyler, Kimberly Getz, Tulai Patane, and Ed Holm, and our youth representative is Janine Bermudez. So thank you for your service. So before we get to the award, I wanted to share a little bit of, I like to share a little bit of history with you guys to, you know, get us excited about history. So I thought it might be fun to take a look at this unique building that's out on Martin Way. Ken was the first person to tell me about the importance of this building, and he always wanted to see a historic marker there. So it seems appropriate that I share this with you today. So if you're not familiar, this building is located on Martin Way, just east of Kenwood Street. And as you can see, it is now the Motorsports of Olympia. I'm sure some of you know what it used to be. Lee's Restaurant. It started out as Lee's Steakhouse. It opened on July 5th, 1946. According to newspaper accounts, it became one of the best-known restaurants between LA and Seattle on Highway 99. When I-5 came in during the late '60s, many businesses, including Lee's, came on hard times, but it survived. And it did that by building up a strong local clientele. It eventually closed in 1986, after almost 40 years of being in business, and that was due to rising insurance costs, dark inflation. So although that sounds like a pretty familiar story, there's a couple of things that make this restaurant pretty unique. So take a look at that sign there. It says Kentucky Fried Chicken, and yep, it's that Kentucky Fried Chicken. So the now iconic Colonel Sanders, born Harland Sanders, after holding down a variety of jobs, gained a reputation for of jobs, gained a reputation for his delicious chicken served out of his gas station. It became so popular that he eventually quit the gas station business and opened a restaurant. The key to his success was this fast method that he devised for cooking the chicken using a pressure cooker, and of course, those 11 secret herbs and spices. That was in 1939. When Sanders found out that a new interstate would be bypassing his restaurant in Kentucky, he sold the business in 1956, but but he had a plan. A few years earlier, he had taught his friend, Pete Harmon, who had a restaurant in Salt Lake City, how to cook his chicken. The success was so great that he set up several franchise arrangements that were sort of informal. He would receive four cents for every chicken they cooked using his method. When he sold his restaurant, he decided to make franchising his business. So how did he do that? He put the pressure cooker and some seasonings in the back of his car, and he hit the road. And when he would come across a restaurant he liked, usually a mom-and-pop type operation, he would go in and convince the owners to cook chicken for their employees. And if they liked it, he'd cook for the customers too. And that would signal the beginning of franchise negotiations. So that is how Lee's Restaurant became one of the earliest franchises of Kentucky Fried Chicken. A newspaper article in 1986 suggested that Lee's had the first franchise period, but we clearly know that wasn't true. But in addition to his friend Pete, several other people made franchise deals with Sanders before he hit the road. I do think, though, that it is very possible that this is the first Kentucky Fried Chicken in the state of Washington. I have looked through all of the newspaper databases I have access to, and this is the first advertisement that shows up for Kentucky Fried Chicken, and it's from 1958. So the first owners were Kay and Lee Bensley, and they remodeled the restaurant, changing it to the look that we know today. You can see that look up there. They added a dance floor and a space for live entertainment. And then they sold it to Leo and Alexandra Gillis in 1961. After Leo's death in 1963, his son Paul and his wife Ruth shared operation with Alexandra, also known as Mama Gillis. Before coming to the Northwest, they were restaurateurs in Chicago. And before immigrating to the United States, they lived in Lithuania. They fled their country before the Russian invasion in 1945. Alexandra and Leo sacrificed their safety by hiding Jewish neighbors from invading German soldiers during World War II. They would have been caught and executed if not for a tip-off that the Germans were coming to inspect their house. And in the 1980s, Mama Gillis was recognized for their bravery and awarded medals from Israel and from the Judaic Heritage Society. I had no idea when I started looking into this local iconic restaurant that such an interesting story was behind it. That's one of the reasons I love what I do. I continue to be surprised by each unique story that I discover. So on to the business at hand. There he is again. Hi, Ken. A significant part of Lacey History Month is that each year, the Lacey Historical Commission considers nominations of individuals or organizations who have made a significant contribution to preserve or promote Lacey's history. And it was then-Historical Commissioner Ken Ballsley more than 20 years ago who had this idea to honor people who were doing local history in this way. This year, the commission decided to acknowledge that founding by renaming it the Ken Ballsley Lacey Historian of the Year Award. So recipients of the Lacey Historian of the Year Award have included all the honorees listed here, including Ken himself, who was given the honor in 2015. He might have suggested it to me, though. Also included is last year's recipient, another former Historical Commissioner Seth Huff, who is also with us here today. And I would like to ask him to stand and any other former recipients or their family members, if they are present, to stand and be acknowledged as former Historians of the And it was, in fact, Seth who nominated who we are honoring today. So the 2023 Ken Ballsley Lacey Historian of the Year Award is being presented to Dr. Thelma Jackson, whose work in the local community is extensive. She was on the North Thurston Public School Board for over 20 years. She was president of the Washington State School Directors Association and on the Board of Trustees at the Evergreen State College. And she has worked tirelessly to improve educational opportunities for students and families in Lacey and Thurston County. She coordinated work options for women at the Olympia YWCA to improve the lives of women, girls, and the local community of color. In 2002, she earned a PhD in Educational Leadership and Change, and she founded Foresight Consultants to assist with inclusive and diverse education. And she is a founding commissioner on the City of Lacey's Commission on Equity, doing the important work of making sure the city's commitment to diversity and equity is fulfilled. When asked about her legacy, I found a quote where she said she wants to make the community in which I live the best possible place for all people, including Black folks and other marginalized people, to open up access and opportunity of every aspect of life. And it's clear that she's doing that. So today, we are recognizing her for her research on Black folks in Thurston County, culminating in a book, Blacks in Thurston County, Washington, 1950 to 1975: A Community Album. Dr. Jackson, as I said, was nominated by former Commissioner and Historian of the Year Seth Huff. Dr. Jackson took on this project because there has been a large gap in the historical documentation of Black people in the area. And she chose the 1950 to 1975 time period because of the increase of immigration during that time, as well as the ability to conduct oral histories with people who are still living. So I'm gonna read a little bit of what Seth said in his nomination. I thought he said it very well. This legacy project accumulated over 30 years of research on Black residents of the local area, many of their stories taking place in Lacey. This book gives accounts of the struggle and triumph of civil rights and cultural identity of Blacks in Lacey. Dr. Jackson's book adds yet another layer to Lacey's story and inspires us to investigate what is known and unknown about Black community members in Lacey's past. Dr. Thelma Jackson, with the publication of this book, has promoted Lacey's history and showcases Black people's positive contributions to our community. We couldn't agree more. We are only beginning, just beginning, to uncover the histories of marginalized people in our past. It is painstaking and passionate work like Dr. Jackson's that will help ensure that everyone's stories are eventually told. And I would now like to invite our Chair, Jim Keough, up to present the award to Dr. Jackson.
So first thing I need to note real quickly is we would prefer to have had a plaque here and have ordered one, but it hasn't gotten here yet. So you get two options. You can decide this is your second copy that you can post elsewhere, or you can trade it in as a coupon. Take your choice. Anyway, I'd like to invite Thelma up here for the presentation.
I also wanted to note that this was unanimous selection on the part of the commission. We all hardly agreed with Seth's nomination and are very happy to make this award to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's a delight to share this evening as you honor Ken Ballsley, longtime friend of mine. I have a few comments I'd like to make, but I'd like to start with a few acknowledgements. And the first being that of my family members who are here with me, my husband Nat, my daughter, Debrina Jackson Gandy. I want to thank Seth for the nomination. I found that very delightful when he approached me and asked me, would it be okay if he did that? And I didn't know Lacey had a Historian of the Year Award. So I was honored by that. I want to thank some of the key people who were part of the making of this book, a couple of them who are present here this evening, but I'd like to call their names anyway. Ed Ecto, who was a contributing editor, Jill Severn, who was one of the writers, Georgie Brown, Myrna Day, Myrna is here, Tina Roberts-Crery, Lenore Hughes, Alice Drummer, and one of our production assistants, Katie Finnell, in the back. There are some other friends present, and I'm delighted that you were able to join us here this evening. But thinking in terms of this history award, when we're living in a time where history is so vitally important, and we find that there are so many versions of the same thing that happened over time, and it really is a matter of who did the writing, and through whose eyes, and what narrative emerges as that written history. So I became interested in this history project as I began to follow the written history of Blacks in Thurston County many years ago. My family and I arrived here in this area in 1971 for me and 1970 for Nat. So we've been here in this area 53 years within about a three-mile radius. We were finally formally annexed to the city in just June of this past year, with Lacey just on the other side of our fence for all those years. So we always considered ourselves a member of the Lacey community. But I couldn't learn very much about other Blacks who had come here prior to us. We knew that when we arrived here, there were very few Blacks, very few Blacks. And and most of them were out here in this northeast part of the county. And that was a very interesting point to me, but I never could figure out why that was the case. And so as I began to become interested in what the written version of history of Thurston County said, there was very little mention of Blacks in Thurston County. Once you got past the late 1800s and the early 1900s, where a few people were mentioned, and it was like there was no one, and I just didn't think that was possible. But with very little written, there's very little to research and very little to learn. So why would one start with this amateur interest in history? And I began to think in terms of, well, who's here now? Who haven't gone yet? Who can we get the oral histories of? Whose stories can we learn about so that before they're gone and take their histories with them, we can at least get a version of what that was like? So we tackled the period 1950 to 1975, a 25-year window of opportunity. And there were a number of Blacks in the area still living at that time. Our list began with an initial list of about 75 people, and ultimately about 45 after we could discover who no longer was here, who had deceased, and whatever the case might be. We began the project really in about 2007 and began in earnest in that endeavor in about 2018. And like everything else, we were interrupted by COVID, which delayed things even further. But ultimately and finally, we were able to complete the book, which I have copies here, and they are in the rear. If you have missed your copy so far, they are for sale. And we formally launched it, Black History Month 2022, last year, there at the community center. And as we continue to build on that history, you know, as you could see the cover, a Jacob Lawrence print looked like Black folk with suitcases migrating to Thurston County. That migration has certainly continued, and it has sped up since 1975. And thinking about it the other day, I said to myself, oh, my goodness, that too is almost 50 years ago. So a lot has happened, a lot has come and gone, and that migration continues. And so with the large numbers of not only Blacks, who were the largest minority group at the time, many other minority groups have come forward, and Lacey now becomes the most diverse of the three major cities in Thurston County. And many others have migrated. So now with the addition of so many more Blacks and another project somewhere in the road, up the road, many more Blacks now reside in the area since Lacey was where it is, the youngest city of the three. So it didn't have the historical, institutional, systemic kinds of confrontations that the other cities had. And one of the things that was very interesting was how is it that most Blacks lived out here in this northeast end of the county? And one of the byproducts of this book and the research that went into this book eventually pointed out that no matter who we talked to, who we interviewed, the first theme that emerged, the most common current theme, was that of housing discrimination. And so when we think in terms of the conditions that existed when, well, we're talking about 50s, 1950s, and the majority of us lived in Lacey due to racism, housing discrimination in other areas of the county, caused by redlining by banks and credit unions, racially restricted covenants in some places, real estate practices and other practices that excluded us. But Lacey was a young city compared to its neighbors and welcomed us and other diverse My historical venture hopefully adds to the understanding about the experiences, challenges, joys, triumphs, and successes of those Blacks who were pioneers and trailblazers that allow current Blacks and other minority people to enjoy their lives as they have chosen to live here. We now work to make that diversity as inclusive and equitable as possible for all. So again, I thank you for this honor and this award of the Ken Ballsley Historian of the Year. Thank you.
So next on our agenda, I don't think we got anyone signed up, but it's for public comment on, for this evening. We didn't have anyone signed up, but if anyone wishing to give public comment. Seeing none, we'll go into our Lacey History Month proclamation.
Whereas the history of Lacey begins with the Coast Salish people, specifically southern Leshootseed speakers, the Nisqually and Squawson Island tribes, who have lived here since time immemorial and are still here today, and?
Whereas early American settlers traveled in covered wagons, including the first settlers in Lacey, David and Elizabeth Harrison Chambers, who arrived in 1845, and whose property became the Mountain View Golf Course, the Mountain View Rodeo, and eventually Panorama, and?
Whereas the Northern Pacific Railroad reached the rural farming community of Woodland in 1889 and built a depot to service it, bringing a hotel, school district, platted subdivision, and racetrack. And in 1891, a post office was established with the new name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state, and?
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors, and on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received- And on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received one of the earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington. And?
Whereas in the mid-20th century, many Black people arriving in Thurston County faced housing challenges due to discrimination and redlining, lived in Lacey, which was without racially restricted covenants. And?
Whereas a group of local business owners and representatives from North Thurston School District, the Lacey Fire District, and the Lacey Area Chamber of Commerce joined forces to prevent annexation into Olympia. And through a vote of its residents, the City of Lacey was incorporated on December 5th, 1966. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 to be Lacey History Month. And further, I encourage all residents to join me discovering and celebrating Lacey's 178 years of history during this month of May and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on May 4th, 2023, Ken Ballsley Day.
Quick picture for the record here? So we have one last quick proclamation, and then we'll adjourn next proclamation.
Here goes. Whereas transportation accounts for about one-third of the energy used in Washington State and about half of our CO2 emissions from fossil fuel. And?
Whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, parking problems, and traffic congestion. And?
Whereas bicycling makes people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases through physical activity, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey has adopted a pedestrian and bicycle plan to prioritize and encourage bicycle and pedestrian trips by providing a safe, well-connected, and convenient bicycle and pedestrian circulation network throughout the city. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey encourages and supports pedestrian and bicycle facilities for our development standards. And?
Whereas InterCity Transit, with sponsors including many area businesses and organizations, is hosting the 36th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May 2023. And?
Now, therefore, in recognition of the 66th National Bike Month, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2023 as Bicycle Month in the City of Lacey and encourage all community members to consider using active recreation and transportation modes when possible. Signed by myself on this date. And turn it over to Doug Duncan-Green from InterCity Transit to accept this.
Hi, everybody, and thanks for having me. It's been a real interesting meeting so far tonight. I wish I was there in person, but that was the breaks. In any case, just for the record, my name is Duncan Green, and I'm here to represent InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge, which is our local celebration of National Bike Month. So thank you, Mayor Ryder and council members, for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the City of Lacey, along with History Month. Now, we're in our 36th consecutive year. The Bicycle Community Challenge is the longest-running bike challenge in our region. So for over three and a half decades, the BCC has been encouraging people to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And now for the second year, we've opened the challenge up to all kinds of bike rides to involve more people and encourage them to enjoy and benefit from all the good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. So of course, we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation, too. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being, and riding a bike to get around only increases those benefits. So as you might have seen on my screen before I turned on my camera, our mascot this year is a Great Horned Owl that I managed to photograph in my front yard last summer. Gave me the inspiration for our theme this year, which is, who is going to ride today? Just to bring a little levity to the event, along with all the other benefits of riding a bike. We do have several events each year, not just our flagship Bike Month in May. And we start out with the Winter Bicycle Challenge every year. This year, 379 people participated, which was a record, so we're really happy about that. And then our recent kickoff event, the Earth Day Market Ride, was a couple Saturdays ago, and 130 people turned out for that on a not super sunny day, so that was heartwarming. And the current event, our Bicycle Community Challenge in May, we're four days into it, and so far, 354 people have logged 6,340 miles in the first four days, so that's pretty exciting. We have over 40 local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from prize items, discount coupons, and free passes, support for our events, running their own challenges, parallel in-house, and more. So we have lots of great prizes, amazing community support, and we just hope you won't disappoint the Great Horned Owl, and you'll ride in the Bicycle Challenge this May to celebrate our 36th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. It's easy to participate as an individual or a member of a team. Just go to bcc.intercitytransit.com, and you can sign up there or log into an account if you already have one. Feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have any questions. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have now as well. So, thank you.
Go ahead, councilmember.
I just want to say, Duncan, it's nice to see you, and I've got four rides in. It's May 4th. I've ridden four times. I'm logging all my trips.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate you accepting this proclamation, and we'll try to get out there and ride our bikes. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
So before we adjourn to the community room to celebrate Ken Ballsley, I have one item under the Mayor's Report. I know a lot of people have been interested in where you're at on your city manager recruitment. We asked for an in-depth assessment of where we're at with our current leadership, and we will be journeying into an executive session next Thursday after the meeting to discuss that with. And so we'll be able to report out after that. And so that is my announcement under the Mayor's Report. That means we have reached the end of our agenda. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey. Enjoy Ken Ballsley Day, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.